So it is seven o'clock PM on Monday, October 21st, 2019. And I call to order this meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, John Ashby, Christine Malik, and I am Crystal Brackey. We are joined at the table also with board members Diana Maseo and Naomi Ferguson, as well as Superintendent Yunoski. And board member Tim Paulus is unable to be with us this evening. We strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement that we inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our meeting this evening. And special thanks to all of you who are with us tonight. There are printed copies of the agenda on the table in the back or online at richfieldschools.org. Our first item of business this evening is to approve the agenda before us, which I wanted to point out does include one change from the agenda that was originally posted on the website last Wednesday. We have removed the new business item related to the superintendent contract as we were not yet able to finalize language to provide enough time for review leading up to this meeting. We do have a general agreement that we are working towards, so I wanted to make sure that I share that and anticipate that we will be bringing the proposed contract to one of the next two meetings in November. So with that change that I just wanted to make sure was clear to everyone, is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda.
A second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. Moving into the information and proposals, non-action items section of the agenda, this evening we begin with time for public comment, and we do have one request for public comment this evening. Before our comments from Mr. Royster, I will provide a brief overview of our guidelines. As outlined in Board Policy 216, we welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak unless translation is required, in which case six minutes are provided. Our board secretary, Mary, over here, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close. Thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us, and know that even though we will not be responding in the moment this evening, that we take your comments very seriously and may receive follow-up from us or one of our staff members after the meeting ends. So with that, Mr. Royster, I welcome you up to the microphone.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your time. My name is Sean Royster. Been a resident of Richfield since May of 2000. I'm here to illuminate the board about a situation going on with my son and I'm assuming many other students. In 2013, he was diagnosed with depression and anxiety. He was granted a 504 status that fell on deaf ears for over six years. We repeatedly reached out to counselors at both the middle school and the high school, and nothing happened. It finally came to a head this year when I knew he had little or no room for error in his schooling, that he was signed up for two study halls, and I thought, this isn't right. Proceeded to have a meeting in September with his current counselor, who unfortunately is inheriting this mess because the previous counselor has moved on. Had a meeting with her in early September and discussed a lot of items which were not followed up or acted upon, unfortunately. Then came and saw Superintendent Yunoski a few weeks ago, and then the following, within the couple of weeks of that, had a meeting with Dr. Cook, or Mr. Cook, Ms. Jastro, I believe it is, Danielle Jastro, and Ms. Zimmerman. And I think we have finally gotten something going forward. But my concern is that it's taken six years and all this activity to try to get something going. He's had no 504 plan working whatsoever. We found evidence of one 504 plan memo being sent out last January, and there was no follow-through whether it was through administration or through the individual teachers themselves. And what really concerns me is I have a voice and I don't mind speaking up and advocating for my kid, but I'm also concerned about, we have a large Latino population in this neighborhood, and I worry that they might not feel that they can advocate properly for their kids. And I refuse to believe that just on probability alone, that my son just happens to be the one unlucky kid that's slipping through the cracks every year. It's a civil rights violation, and it's gone on for six years, and I really just worry about this being a systemic issue. I do think that things are going in the right direction now, but I'm also very concerned because in September, I thought, when I left the meeting, I thought, things are going in the right direction, and it still took a month for him to get put into a credit recovery class, you know? And we got to a point where, you know, just, there's no time left to waste on this, and I just think there needs to be an audit done as far as what students qualified for 504 and what's being done to met their needs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Royster. We appreciate you taking the time to be here with us and share your comment. We do take it very seriously. Wanted to share that the next opportunity for public comment will be at the beginning of our board meeting on Monday, November 18th, and welcome anyone who would like to come address the board at that time. So we will move next into the superintendent update section of the agenda, so I will pass things over to Superintendent Yunoski to introduce the three topics before us this evening.
All right, so I'm going to bring up Mr. Holgi. One of the things that the board had requested a couple of months back was a review of some of the things that we talked about in this frame, but specifically focused on safety measures helping to reduce worker work compensation claims. And so this presentation will be in that area. Mr. Holgi.
Great, thank you. And as Dr. Yunoski said, this is something that was requested earlier about when we're reviewing our workers' compensation insurance. What we found this year was we had a large increase in our insurance premium rate despite having, which you'll see here, some positive results as far as some of the work that we've been doing because of the lags of when things come on and go off, the different components of it. One of the other things that you'll see is this really is a team effort across the district. So Dan Holcomb from IEA and I will be presenting some of the information here, which you'll see Dan Kressinger, we'll see Brendan Nielsen will appear from Richfield, as well as Luke Salmon from SFM, our new workers' compensation carrier, to answer any questions and kind of see where this information is coming from and also highlight any additional information that's requested. We'll be taking a look at workers' compensation claims data, measures helping reduce claims, some of the work that we've been doing with IEA as well as within the district to improve safety across the organization, talk about past improvements, future improvements, and then refresh on our MAK OSHA drill, which is something that we do every year with different buildings within our program. So just kind of highlight our 2018-18 school year injury trends. You'll see that our claims are actually up from the last three years. One of the things we work really hard at within the district is reporting everything that we hear and see. So one of the things that is missing is our dollar impact of our paid claims to date for 18-19, which would have been that full year. That actually was $70,000, or just under $70,000. So you'll see a $70,000 from the previous year. The year before that, it was $268,000, and the year before that, it was $122,000. And as we talked about in the insurance renewal, when we look at our moderating, we're really looking at the three years prior, and then there was a lower year that went off with some of these higher years coming on for that 18 and 19. So that's one of the reasons we saw, but we see with our 18-18 experience with SFM, we see some of those trends improving as well. You can see a chunk of those, 32%, from last year where student-related kicks, punches, bites, and again, even if somebody is not missing work because of that, we are asking that people report so that we can track that information. And we have a number of ways that we've been working with training areas of that. Slip strips and falls are another one of those that tend to be fairly consistent, having people be aware of their surroundings. We've been engaging in a variety of preventive techniques and information techniques, and then strain-related but pushing, pulling. So those are some of the areas that we're looking at. And you can just see that previous year claim data as well. Biggest piece, though, is that lost time or the more significant injuries are obviously seen reduced in our claim chain previous year. With this, I'm going to turn it over to Dan Holcomb to share some of the work around the calendar of the environmental health and safety tasks that take place every year. We've been partnering with IEA for, I believe, 20 years, I think, or more than that, in our workplace safety and a variety of our health and safety issues or environmental impacts across the organization for our students and our staff. With that, I'll turn it over to Dan.
Yes, so these are the tasks that could help reduce work comp claims throughout the year. So we do a health, safety, and wellness committee meeting every other month, consists of about 20 members, and we discuss, go over all the incidents that were reported, as well as any safety concerns or questions that have been brought forth. Every February, we do a MAK OSHA inspection, and we go through one school or numerous schools, depending on how much time the inspector has, but we go through and kind of identify any safety concerns that the inspector does see, and then we correct them in a timely manner to help prevent any future incident that could occur, which also could be a work comp claim. And that inspector is Mike Wygall of Metro X2. He's now retired, so now we actually have an ex-OSHA inspector to help get another set of eyes in the schools. In March, we also do an indoor air quality survey. We send it to all staff members, and they can state any concerns they have in their classroom, in which we can get follow-up on by doing an investigation then if there's any concerns with their, with the indoor air quality of the room to help, you know, improve their health. And April, we do a LACO-TEGO training for all authorized employees, which is going to be, the majority is going to be maintenance custodial buildings and grounds workers to help educate them on deenergizing equipment before they put in maintenance on it. In May, we do respiratory protection training. We provide that to custodial maintenance and building ground staff. And then June, we do our custodial safety training that covers all topics of safety for custodians. And that's also includes, the Richfield Fire Department comes in and they do a demonstration on fire extinguishers, as well as they discuss other fire safety things that they've seen throughout the year. In August, we do a lot of variety of different trainings with a lot of different departments. And we're transferring now to an online training module, Safe Schools, which we'll discuss more in a different slide. We also do have the fire department come back in, and they do a transportation safety training with the bus drivers to help educate the bus drivers on certain things that they've seen throughout the, among the roads, as well as to help them be safer with the police staff out there, so no one's getting in harm's way. As well as there's a new hire orientation. All new hires get a packet from HR, and they go through that. In November, we're also doing radon testing this year at all schools. And then in December, we're doing an indoor air quality building walkthrough, so we get the measurements in all occupied classrooms, temperature, CO, CO2, and we're also looking for any sort of water issues in that classroom that could eventually turn to mold or turn to some other indoor air quality concern. So we do all that, and we document that as well. Stuff that isn't completed annually, but we do forklifts, aerial training for all custodial and buildings and grounds. We also do turf field and bleacher inspections, as well as playground inspections, and custodians are actually doing those monthly, but IEA does those annually as well, so. So communication, so other measures of how we could help reduce work comp claims. So Dan Kressinger sends out a health and safety email annually, and it discusses how to report a safety concern or question to Dan or myself or to whoever. And it states that you can, there's two different ways. You can send an email to the Richfield Health and Public Safety email, give them a call as well, or you can go to the district website, and there's a safety suggestion tab on there that you can submit a concern or question that'll get followed up upon right away. There's a work comp hotline instruction email, so how to audio report, how do you report an injury, since there is a new SFM hotline that you can call to get instant feedback with a nurse. Posters and signs, so SFM provides a district with posters and signs that are placed throughout the district. The one you will probably see mostly is outside, the slip strips and falls, the penguin one, because that's a very common thing that you'll see through all those winter months. And then also, SFM does have a winter slip strips and falls video that gets sent out by HR every year, just to help educate people on how to properly be walking outside and not be wearing certain footwear during the really slippery ones. Addressing any concerns quickly, so those safety suggestions and concerns that are brought forth, we deal with those right away. Indoor air quality concerns as well, we get those sent to Dan and myself, and we discuss those. And then any PPE concerns, personal protective equipment requests, I sometimes get those from different departments, and then I submit those orders through Dan right away so they can have their PPE for their job task.
And then when we talk about some of our work with our special education students and with our other teachers, the crisis prevention and intervention training, or CPI training, is something that we've been doing for a number of years, making sure that all our staff are appropriately trained on both how to reduce that likelihood of the need for intervention, but then also if there is some sort of a physical intervention that's needed, that those strategies are used and deployed that is safe for both the employee and the student in those situations where there's more of a physical interaction that's required to support that. But at the same time, again, a lot of that really is ways to diffuse behaviors by students without having to engage in physical interactions. And then there's also a behavior collaborative, collaboration support team that is supported through special education and student support services as well. Recent improvements, as Dan mentioned, we've implemented Safe Schools online training, really provides a variety of specialized resources and specialized training modules for different departments, some things that we are, annual trainings that are required, so we require those, but then there's also a variety of tools that are available just for general interests or for individual situations that emerge. SFM workers' compensation insurance, we had been with them, we ended up moving to Travis for a while, and now we're back. It's one of the areas that we just see great tremendous support. Luke Salmon is a regular contender at our health, safety, and wellness committee meetings, helping us understand where claims are, what we might want to be looking at, improving that communication, just so those representatives that are on that committee at the building can bring those messages back, and we can be communicating out to staff on things to be aware of, and also identifying training needs and working with those specific situations. The walk like a penguin, also somebody was saying today, I never knew about this until I came to Richfield. We're using the signs even when we weren't with SFM, posted on other billboards and things like that because it was such a catchy piece. And what we find really around some of those slip strips and falls is we just need people to pay attention. So when we're rushing, when we're jumping out of our car, racing into work and things like that, those are the situations where it's most likely to cause concerns or cause injuries. And so just that awareness of your surroundings is one of the common themes of that training, having those signs out, having the video sent out, and communications when those situations are taking place, is one of the critical pieces. With our new property casualty liability insurance carrier, we have additional resources that are available for training. The nurse triage hotline, as we saw that increase in the number of claims, one of the things that SFM brought back was hotline for the triage for actually reporting your claims. So previously, we had a form that the employee and the supervisor had to fill out, that got sent into the insurance carrier. SFM really has facilitated the process to bring their workload off of our supervisors and the clerical teams in the buildings, where it really is more sit down and make the call right now if you're injured, so that that claim gets reported, and then there's a nurse on the other side of that hotline that can help triage and say, you know, you're fine, or you know what, maybe you want to go and have this evaluated by somebody else. So that triage is taking place through that process. And then just a variety of other employee safety concerns, building security, as we're looking at access to different points, step ladders at all of the schools now have been implemented. One of the things that came out of our health, safety, and wellness committee is ways to keep people from climbing on chairs and desks in order to be self-supportive and being able to handle a classroom. So we allocated step ladders to key areas where previously teachers might have not always been making the right decisions, or staff might not always been making the right decision, but having step ladders so now people can hang things up on the walls in a safe environment instead of having it themselves at risk. We've installed anti-slip mats in our kitchens where there's likely to be water or there's a lot of activity in those areas, as well as some things within our shop areas with saw stops, table stop, machine guarding, and then also fall protection assessment. And we've seen a number of things where, in our auditorium and in the roof areas, where people are close to heights that they might be falling off, we've been putting guardrails and things like that across the organization over a series of time, and that's been a long, ongoing process as well. Future improvements, staff communication newsletters with Jennifer Valley on board. We're looking at implementing our, a new staff communication, provide regular communication out to staff on a variety of things, just to, A, keep them informed about what's going on in the organization, so our staff can be champions for the work that we're doing and be well-informed about the why and the how of what we're doing as an organization, but then also provide tools and tricks through that tool, just to kind of keep some of those safety components on their mind, as well as how to report concerns that come up and reminding them of that. Incident investigations, learning more about incidents that are occurring and trying to figure out if we're seeing common themes across buildings or programs. We talked about the personal protective equipment, access to that, the ladder assessment, and then the machine guarding assessments are things that are ongoing in those areas. This is some information about MAK OSHA, so I'm going to turn that back over to Dan Holcomb. It's really small here, but he can talk a little bit about the process, and hopefully your materials can see a little more of the detail.
Yeah, so the MAK OSHA does occur every February, and if we go to the high school or middle school, we're going to go to the science classroom, art classroom, tech ed. Some of the areas that are going to be handling hazardous material could be hazardous chemicals, could be exposed to any sort of blades or any sort of machines. So we focus on there because that's the highest exposure for an injury, for a severe injury, according to OSHA. So we fall on there, as well as custodial areas and all that. So on the last MAK OSHA that was done at the middle school, we had a table guard that, our table saw guard that was not on properly. So that's one way that we can get kind of face-to-face with the teacher to inform them of why it's so important. But there's also some similar things such as a block fire extinguisher. It seems kind of minor, but you never know in case of emergency that you want to at least be looking at everything. Same thing with block eyewash is, you commonly see that. And those things like that that are commonly followed, as well as improper labeling. You don't want to have a container that has the wrong labeling. You've got in your fingers, or something gets in your eye, you want to know what exactly you've got in your eye. So you want to have everything correctly labeled, so you can be able to identify everything that does occur. So I know this was brought to the board, and in June, we discussed that a little bit, but it's just another tool we use to help prevent a future work comp claim. So we'll keep on doing this every February, and we'll bring forth results every time. Here are some pictures. So the top left, it was the, it was an emergency release into the kitchen area was frozen. So if you would have unlocked in there, you would have had a hard time getting through because it was, because it was frozen, frozen open or frozen closed. So we had to address right away. The top middle was the machine guarding that was missing. Yes, it is a saw stop. It does stop, supposed to stop once it comes into hand contact, but you're still getting cut before that does happen. Block fire extinguisher, top right. Bottom left, it's just their stuff in front of the emergency exit. Bottom middle, the eyewash was not working properly, so we had to configure it that better to have it working. And the bottom right, there was not a fire extinguisher in the fire extinguisher box, but it wasn't required in that part of the school. So if that's the case, we just have to rip out the whole box in that pool area and not have that issue on there. Any questions?
Where was the last fake MAK OSHA inspection that we discussed over the summer? Which school, building, you remember?
That was...
We were at the Central School in the summer. The same one?
Yeah, so...
I'm asking because that freezer thing, I don't, it's really dangerous. And it's like, it's there again, and it's like, I thought we...
So, go ahead.
Yeah, so these results are the exact same of what was brought forth in February. So the reason why that was because they were doing some cleaning in the freezer, and they had it open for a long, for an extended period of time while doing cleaning, and somehow it, everything kind of, everything kind of, you know, thawed out and then refroze. So that situation doesn't always act...
So it's same problem, different instance, so it was fixed, and then...
So I appreciate that you recognized a part of this presentation, because this presentation came to the board, I think it was in May, where much of this information was highlighted.
So it is the same instance?
It is the same instance. It is the same instance. That was a very full meeting, and so there's a lot of things that we're just really cruising through, and so when the question came up, when we were doing the workers' compensation renewal, we thought it might be a good time to kind of review some of these pieces that were shared with the board. So this isn't something that was neglected three months ago, and now it's the same thing. But we also did do a deeper dive on the workers' complaints, and then also into some more of the specific experiences. Did you pay any attention?
She did pay any attention. Good work, though. Of the injury categories, you, it's early in the presentation, you told us about three different injury categories, one of which was strains. I believe there was trips, falls, stumbles, strains, and I think was the other one, like student incidents? Anyway, my question is really about, of the strains, do we break those out on the basis of a repetitive motion injury as opposed to somebody who was just lifting too much at one time? So I, so I'm thinking of that, basically that the training and whatnot would be very different if it's a repetitive motion injury as opposed to a, yeah.
Yep, so we do do that, and SFM has been a great partner, and if Luke wants to come up and share any information on this, he can. We don't necessarily break it down in our committee meetings, but SFM has a very large educational book of business, and not surprisingly, many schools have similar events and activities. So we find certain incidents occurring more within our nutrition services team than we might find within our custodial team than we might find within our parent team. So I don't know if there's anything more to add on to it, but they are looking at that and helping support our work in those areas, which drive into those training components that we're looking at specifically. Our specific number of incidents in any one of those strain areas tends to be smaller, so we don't, we aren't finding necessarily five strains all happening within the nutrition services team at this building to be able to have that confidence on that it's an area, but what the SFM does is something that supports it. Do I add anything to that?
Yeah, sure. So thanks for having me. Luke Salmon, I'm a loss prevention specialist with SFM. SFM ensures over 150 school districts in the state of Minnesota, so we do have a lot of resources to hopefully help the district in some of these areas we discussed. A lot of times, to your point, there are a lot of different strain-related injuries, usually lifting, pushing, pulling, repetitive motions as well. So we do break those down. You know, the thing that's tricky about strain injuries is they tend to be the most costly, especially in school districts and really all industries with an aging workforce. Usually if somebody has a back strain as we age, obviously there might be more physical therapy, there might be more medical treatment, and that's typically why those claims end up being a little bit more costly.
Yeah, and the answer prevention is where the pound of cure, obviously, with these guys, and so, yeah, being ahead of, being ahead of those is obviously the best way to go, yeah.
And one of the things that we honestly find is when people are doing something outside of their routine is when injuries, in many cases, are likely to occur. So Dan works with his facilities team when summer comes, when they're not just cleaning or doing some activities like that, but are engaging in other cleaning activities beyond what is the typical component of it, and does some trainings on those areas to make sure that people are aware of what's going on in those areas as well.
Okay.
The one question I was going to ask is, just looking at the injury trends from this past year, so sort of a similar theme to what Pete was just talking about, the percentage, you know, of ones that were student-related, for example, 32%. How does that compare to prior years? Are we seeing more, less? Is it fairly steady? I just think that would be helpful to get a sense of as we think about staff safety and student safety as well.
Yeah, I think that one of the things you'll see is we did change insurance carriers between 17-18, 18-19, so we had different opportunities to read that down in different ways. It's been relatively consistent. Obviously, you saw the increase in the number of claims reported, but as we talked about earlier, with just around $70,000 of claims versus $268,000 of claims the previous year, the level of claims is something that was mitigated in that area. Regardless, we do training with our special education staff on their awareness. We offer wrist guards and things like that, or students, or staff who might be interacting with students who are fighters or scratchers or things like that. Not everybody enjoys wearing wrist guards when they're on the job, and so kind of working on those specific situations and doing some education with staff to make sure that they're engaging in safe... and so kind of working on those specific situations and doing some education with staff to make sure that they're engaging in safe behaviors. Similarly, we have burn guards for our nutrition services team, but they tend to get hot. And when you're not thinking about it, it just seems more of an inconvenience. So we continue to work on some of those areas from an education standpoint.
Safe to say then that next year, we will be able to compare where the injuries are taking place on a percentage basis.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think one, and I get to the other question that I wanted to ask, which is, knowing that one really expensive injury could throw this, all these numbers out of whack, what would you guys recommend as the best way to sort of have that apples-to-apples comparison to understand the trend, knowing that we could have an aberration any given year with one injury that is 100K?
So the experience modification factor, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but basically the state of Minnesota derives the experience modification factor. And so they're, they're comparing you to other school districts of similar size, and they're looking at the cost of those claims over a three-year period. And so that's kind of your gauge. I think the mod right now is a 148, and it was a .98, I believe. So I'm sure that's part of why, you know, you saw that increase at the renewal. And so that's kind of the, what we, the state uses to gauge how you're doing versus your peers. As far as your student-related injuries question goes, so SFM, we did a study about five years ago where we were looking at, you know, where are our losses coming from in our, in our school districts? And at that time, 25% of all the injuries reported to SFM were student-related. We're in the process right now of updating that study, and student-related injuries are now 40% of district injuries. And so it's certainly an area that we're, we're keeping an eye on, and I know the district is, is working to help prevent those. Obviously, they, they are more challenging, they're behavioral-based, there's two people usually involved. But there are certainly things that we can do with CPI training and some of the other things to help hopefully prevent those from happening.
See, any other questions? Thank you very much for the report and for being here with us tonight.
Let's keep that going, Mr. Holgi, and very fine print in regard to our audits, our preliminary audit results.
I'm going to flip over just because I can make my screen bigger if it's going to, if I can do that. So we'll go back to the real fine print on the screen here, just try to scroll through. So we are in the process of completing our audits. Our auditors have been onsite, they are now back preparing their report. We're answering a few more questions in, questions in the process. Right now, we're anticipating that the audits, the auditors will be here on November 18th, pending a schedule conflict that they're working around, just to kind of make sure that they will be here for their formal presentation, the formal report back to the board. But we did want to share some information on that, especially as it relates to our budget and where we're ending, where we anticipate ending at the end of the seven, or 18, '19 fiscal year. What you'll see on that top line is our unassigned fund balance. It's projected to go from 5.47 up to 7.07% for that 18, '19 year. And just kind of as a point of reference, this was the first year of the investment in our referendum funds. And so one of our goals was to increase that unassigned fund balance so that we have some sustainability in that area. So 18, '19 is where we saw class size reductions. 18, '19 is where we saw some of the additional investments that we promised in that referendum. And one of the things that we looked at is because we hired so many new staff that year, we had projected our staff based on the salary and benefits of our existing staff the previous year. Obviously, that tended to be more senior staff as a whole than what was hired in. So we saw some positive impact and some sustainability of that program because some of the staff that were hired in did not have as much experience because we were adding new staff versus people who were existing. Second category is the series of restricted category funds. These are funds that are to be used for specific purposes. Just a couple of highlights in this area. You'll notice that in the operating capital, as well as in the long-term facilities maintenance, we see some increases of $1 million and $437,000 in long-term facilities maintenance. Obviously, with our facilities projects going on, we're spending less of that annual expenditure, knowing that we're making building improvements using that capital funds. This will help us provide some sustainability to our purchases of equipment, as well as our long-term facilities maintenance after the completion of those projects. And just a reminder, the long-term facilities maintenance investment from that facilities project that was approved funded about the first three to four years of projected expenses. There was a tier one, tier two, and tier three. Each one of those was about three blocks of long-term facilities maintenance. And that was about three years of maintenance that were able to occur within that project. And so this is now providing some additional supports for work projects and other long-term facilities maintenance that are either outside of the scope of that project or that will be able to be saved for future years. Medical assistance is another area where we do some third-party billing for some of the medical assistance support services that are provided within the district. There are very limited places that we can use those funds in that category. And so that's another one where we see it actually stayed flat this last year. What we actually were able to do is identify some expenditures for benefits in special education that are allowed to be charged to medical assistance, and that allowed us to also increase that unassigned fund balance because of those areas. At the same time, we maintained effort for our special education costings, and so did not see any reduced expenditures with that increase. So our financial sustainability really was supported with those medical assistance funds this year. And it allows us to maintain our baseline at a closer level versus seeing a lot of bumps and increases and decreases in our special education program based on specific students. And then moving on to the assigned funds, these are things that we've started to put some buckets together to save for either the things that might occur, sustainability for our program, as well as investments that we need to take, see increases in. So with the assigned turf, we see an increase in that component. That ties within the replacement of our turf. Program initiatives, we maintained and add or increase to that. That provides sustainability for program improvements. And if you remember, started back when we increased, changed to the seventh period day, so we could continue that program for years to without, I know for sure we're getting the referendum funding. As we have seen, enrollment fluctuations are something that is very difficult for us to predict currently, where we see increases one year, decreases the next year. So we had put a bucket together a few years ago to help support that change. Future retirement benefits is another area that, depending on the number of retirees, can see some increases or decreases in our severance costs. In this area, we actually, because of the timing around our levy decisions, we were able to receive some additional funds through the levy for our OPEB bonds. This allows us to put some money into that program to sustain our severance if we need to outside of that OPEB trust. And then assigned carrier is a larger category. It tends to be the money that's received for specific purposes at specific buildings, to be used for specific things, and that carries over from one year to the next year at each one of those building budgets, so that they can maintain those donations that are used for specific purposes for to a specific building. That kind of pools together until we see the end of the audit cycle, and then those get allocated back out into the building budgets. So scrolling to the construction, you'll see that in the construction, long-term facilities maintenance, we see went from a $32 million to a $28 million in that construction component. Again, at the beginning of the summer, would have been through the end of June. Obviously, there's, there's been a lot more drawn on that in July and August and through the year. So we'll see that as a constant changing. Our total construction fund you saw reduced by $10 million with that paying off those purposes. And then finally, our net impact is total of all funds is $135 million. Obviously, the construction is the largest component of that, and net change of all of those is $7.4 million. So you'll get some more information in November. We wanted to kind of highlight the fact that we are moving forward with our sustainability initiatives, that we see some positive fund balances allow us to continue those referendums for a couple more years before we need to start to look at some other options or have some considerations for additional reductions that might be needing to occur outside of our normal programming efforts. Any questions?
I do have a couple. So first off, I do want to recognize the strong work in terms of delivering on the commitments that we made in terms of the uses for that operating referendum and that commitments that we've made to the community about both class size reduction and financial sustainability. So strong work there. My questions are kind of in the weeds on some of the assigned funds. The first one falls under the category of hindsight is 2020. The turf, our turf is about 10 years and maybe a little bit over 10 years old. When we approved the installation of the turf, that was contingent upon a business plan that was put forward by some staff members who are no longer with the district. But the business plan was basically to raise revenue to fund replacement of the turf through rental fee revenue. So tell me just sort of where we stand now in terms of actually having a, a capacity to replace turf. I know that we're not at a point right now with that turf where it necessarily needs to be replaced based on the testing that's been done. But we may be looking at that in the next five years, so what do we think?
So a couple of different components. When, I believe the turf was implemented, I think there was the concern of what are we going to do when we have to have that over million dollar investment in the turf again?
Right.
The good news is, speaking to our architects, that turf expenditure for replacements is a lot less than a million dollars, closer to a half a million dollars in that area. So the 318,000, 350,000 were much closer into that range, as well as having some of those long-term facilities maintenance dollars available to that. We've seen some increases in access to, how much money we receive for long-term facilities maintenance to help support that.
Yep.
You may have noticed that there's a second dome that went up in the district here in the community that drew down some of those individuals who were leasing that space and kind of the ingredients that were placed on what that was going to be looking for. At the same time, as a district, we wanted to make sure that our students and our community had more access to that turf. So what we found in that business plan that was originally proposed is, other than when the high school was using it, there was very little opportunity for other rich group of community groups to have access to that space. So as we kind of started to work through different arrangements, that was something that we're seeing increase value and that there are additional groups that now have access to that and are using that space in a different way. And so it comes at a cost to this component, but the investment for the replacement is a lot less than what I think was originally projected.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so what it, so what I hear you telling me is that we're on target for presumably being able to finance the replacement, hopefully when we think that it is needed. And we're also on target to do that without having to take away from other sort of operating revenues or general fund?
From operating revenues, yes. So with the long-term facilities maintenance, a combination of those lease rental fees as well as the long-term facilities maintenance investment and the increased investment or revenues that we see through that, between those two components, we should have funds sufficient to fund that project.
Yep, yep, great. And then my second question was on, can you just give us a little bit more detail on the, the assigned enrollment category? And kind of how that's working?
Yep, so I think it was about two years ago, within fiscal planning, we started to talk about what are some of those projections? We always talked about, well, when the boiler goes out, then we really need to have this money put aside.
Yep.
So when we were sitting at 4% fund balance, we started to think about, okay, where do we need to start thinking about having some money articulated for specific purposes, while at the same time maintaining some flexibility within the organization for unanticipated situations? So with that projected enrollment component of it, knowing that we had last year a reduction of 125 kids that weren't expected, that allows us to access that if we're running a tighter budget and have some more flexibility that way.
So this is basically our cushion for unexpected decline enrollment? Yeah, okay.
And the program improvements is sustainability of some of our programs in specific areas so that we aren't, one year having to add a program, next year having to reduce it, and then all of a sudden things change and then that changes that opportunity.
And for some of those guys, how do we know when enough is enough? So when we have built that assigned fund up to the level that it needs to be, how do we know?
Interestingly enough, we talked about that at fiscal planning this last week and started to ask that question specifically. Obviously, with the unassigned fund balance going up this time with some of those sustainability initiatives, that target of 4 to 8%, now we're at that higher end, approaching that 8% of the target for that unassigned fund balance that helps support our program in those areas. The piece that I think we'll want to do some additional analytics on is if we want to sustain our program as it currently is, what is the extent and length of time that we want to sustain that program with the reduced class sizes, with some of our other efforts? Knowing that we're, this last year, we saw almost a million dollars of reduced compensatory funds because of our enrollment population. So how do we sustain some of those programs before we need to either find additional revenue sources or start cutting programs? So I don't have an answer for you, but that's, I think the question is, at what point do we start spending some of these reserve accounts to prolong that or ask for the investment to make sure we can maintain the program that the community is asking for?
Right.
I think that one of the things to think about from an F-PAC perspective and to think about with our financial planning is we often analyze what neighboring and surrounding districts are doing in terms of their unassigned fund balance, but also there are, there are records of unassigned funds. And so it would also be a good task for the financial planning group to take a look at what is commonly held in terms of unassigned and in terms of assigned fund balances, just to see what that overall picture looks like.
And the conversation at the F-PAC meeting last week was kind of around that, and there was some discussion about the assigned. And I feel like you did a great job of clarifying that a little bit more for all of us, which was what they asked, was a little more clarity on what those specific assigned funds are for. And then they talked a little bit about, like, when the real, like, the actual class size things come out, they were interested in having that information so that, and then maybe a conversation about at what point would we use that for enrollment and maybe figuring out how, how that all works. Beyond the enrollment, the three FTEs that we set aside for the beginning of each year.
Right, and how do we, do we make those decisions and what decisions do we make?
And is three FTE enough to set aside and that kind of thing.
Thank you.
So can I ask one last question?
Oh, sorry.
Then my last question. So a lot of great, a lot of great sort of kind of questions brought up this evening. What would be a reasonable expectation for when we think we could be answering those questions and coming up with plans on, I mean, this, it's fairly subjective yet, but I guess I'm just wondering when we think we could revisit this and start to be developing those plans, fleshing them out? Give ourselves a year to keep kind of working on it?
I think some of the conversation naturally comes up when we plan our budget for the 2021 year. And then obviously, as F-PAC works throughout the year, I think doing some of those analytic review of, how are we doing in terms of our fund balance and our assigned and unassigned? It is very common in that group to have the conversation around is 4 to 8 an appropriate number. There's been a lot of agreement that that has been an appropriate number. And then conversation at the last meeting, as Director Malick told you, was around what, talking a little bit about the assigned funds and what is the utilization and when is, when is that the right number? And so I think that is an evolved conversation continues. And I think that we can certainly task F-PAC and Mr. Holgi to go back and have some of those conversations to bring back to us as we work on our budget coming up in the spring.
Great. I would just add to that, I would like to be able to have a sense when we are looking at our targets for the next year, what we think that responsible range is of having assigned funds that are going to help us address real legitimate needs without that becoming another really significant amount of money that is not going directly to the students that we have today. And so I, I understand that is, that is the dance.
It's tension.
That is the, the decision that we are charged with making. But I think for us to continue to be asking those questions as we are setting the budget in particular for next year will be really important, and I appreciate that we're starting that right now.
So one of the things for board members to reflect on, because we are in a more secure financial, larger picture than we've been in the past, the board has been. The board has been very clear in regard to our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance should go up or remain the same. So to create that and to create an environment where we can, I mean, you can never guarantee anything, but do our best to make sure that that happens involves risk. It involves risk tolerance and thinking about from a board perspective, how we're feeling in terms of risk. So what this often looks like in terms of staffing and staffing ratios, to put it into real dollar terms is, is that we have formulas that align the number of staff to meet our class size ratios and our class size expectations. And then there are a set of numbers that are in a gray area that are a little bit higher on the range, but not outside of the range we'd like to be in if everyone shows up that we would expect. We can add a teacher there in our budget or not. And those decisions, when they come down outside of a formula to give us that safety involves risk. I can't necessarily quantify, I can say the risk in conversations with Mr. Holti and I as we play this out over the set of four or five years have been somewhere between half a million dollars of staffing and a million and a half of staffing. To make sure that we have no class sizes or to, and you could ever make sure of course, but to remove most of the risk of having class sizes larger anywhere than we would want. There's typically been a very, that type of dollar figure. Now, if all of the students show up, the risk was well taken. If the students don't show up or like last year, we were significantly below projection. We are not only not having the funds to pay for that, but we are also releasing some additional or we are not receiving the amount of revenue that we would also like. So I'm just kind of illustrating that because the question in regard to the board is what level of risk tolerance do we then have? If we say stay between four and eight for coming back, or coming back at six percent rather than seven percent? Or what type of flexibility can we take for risk? And again, this is something to answer today. This is just something for us to think about in regard to how we'll feel about, about that.
So I want to make sure I'm digesting that properly. We obviously have that 4% sort of bottom target. But it sounds like what you're saying is as we move forward, we consider again, as we're approaching 8%, we consider how important it is to continue to grow the fund balance even at 7% as opposed to fund some other priority, right?
Or to take some of those risks.
Yeah.
Yes. So at seven percent, if we spend down 1% of our fund balance, it's 6%. At 4%, we're outside of the formula. And I'm not saying that that's what would happen.
Right.
But as we increase staffing or give ourselves more close to guarantees about, about some of our staffing ratios. It increases the risk that we're on the wrong side of that and we go downwards rather than upwards.
In terms of fund balance.
In terms of fund balance, correct.
Got it. Makes sense. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing. So just to frame this a little differently, how wonderful it is to have a 7% fund balance. For a student that came onto the board with a 2.5% fund balance, which was a little bit scary. But done for, and the decision to do that was made for really good reasons. I, I actually agreed with that when it happened. But it is so much nicer to be thinking about, well, we have 7%. Should we use more of that? Rather than how are we going to get this back up to a more comfortable range? So that is some strong work.
Thank you. And I would agree with strong work from our financial team and Mr. Holti. And I would, I would say it is then allowing for, I, I do feel comfortable having us have more of an open conversation around risk. Because the consequences for being wrong at 7% with some assigned funds are very different than the consequences of 2.5% and no assigned funds. So that's why we've been very diligent to put us in a position for the sustainability and ongoing safety of our district and the ongoing financial security of our program.
Now, thank you. And we'll look forward to the formal audit presentation to come and appreciation of all of the work that goes into that.
All right. So last of the superintendent reports, superintendent goals. And we've seen this a couple of times, it has evolved. And just as a reminder, even though these are my final draft of goals, there are conversations that will happen within each of these goals as we continue to work in each of the areas. And we continue to focus on achieving these goals as a district and me achieving these goals as superintendent. Breaking them down into three different categories. Student achievement, which is really specific data outlining the performance of our students. Process goals, which are specific strategic plan strategies and activities designed to improve our overall district. And then individual performance and the board evaluation of the superintendent, including a survey, including feedback from direct reports and, and overall evaluation coming from the school board. Looking at student achievement goals, I'm not going to walk through every little piece, but increasing our graduation rate by 3%. And in each of these categories of data, we're looking at disaggregated data. So we're looking at increasing the rate by 3% and also closing the gap between our highest and lowest groups. Each of the slides you will see last year's actuals. You will see what our goals would be for 2019 and then also goals within gap closure in terms of what it would look like if we were to close gaps by 3% or more. We apply a similar method to the TS Gold, which is an assessment given to our early childhood students. 85% or higher proficiency on the TS Gold and then also across all of our demographic groups. Looking at proficiency growth on the MCA in a multitude of different angles. And closing gaps between the highest and lowest groups, but then also looking for growth and improvement based on that fall math projection. So we're looking at MCA to MCA growth, but then also what the map, which is a fall assessment our students take, would suggest our MCA would be in growth based on that also. Similar methodology for reading. And so within this packet, you have our disaggregated gains or disaggregated scores from last year and also projected what the gains would need to be to achieve each of those goals. And then finally continuing to decrease our suspendable incidences across the district, closing the gap again between our highest and lowest incident groups. A couple of things you will note, we added some demographic groups at the request of the board because we also do measure those and they are in our behavior policy and also in our other policies. Managerial special education is in there, male and female, and then in our tested grades, we also have ELL and non-ELL students in those data points. Then we have done some additional work to really play out what are areas to measure success in regard to process goals and implementing radical hospitality. And really looking at our staff and community survey in February 2020. You'll also note we had an additional survey go out this fall and that'll provide baseline data for us to use and grow from in the future. As we continue to implement and evaluate new survey methodologies. And in here you have the specific questions we are looking at to attempt to measure. And we'll also look at some additional measures as things evolve as we continue to implement some of these pieces. Looking at year one of our phased rollout of Bridges math curriculum and really looking at if our teachers feel supported in their ability to implement the new curriculum and how our structures are working. Looking at continued revisions and implementation of vision cards. And so we'll have ongoing presentations coming up later this fall. We'll have our first vision card presentation of this year. And then also noting that as we do a new strategic plan, next year will be an additional revision year for vision cards. As we continue with our new strategic plan and our, and our vision cards that go along with that. Aligning our booster and fundraising efforts district wide and really making sure that as we continue those meetings, having a fundraising plan and organizational presentation here at the board at the end of the year. To show how we are doing some of our work in a more streamlined, more effective way that has been asked by some of our booster fundraising partners. Continuing to expand our branding and messaging and really looking at things like increased market share and enrollment. And our new, for example, kindergarten kickoff event that will be happening on November 14th as we welcome people in a new way into our district. And try to, our attractive paperwork out much more often and much earlier in the process. Then also noting that we are at the end of the five-year strategic plan ending in 2020. And so leading strategic planning efforts to create new strategic plans. Looking at obviously a, you'll have a process presentation prior to the end of 2019 and then a public strategic plan by year's end. And so what we're looking at is a wide range of community engaged activity to help us define what is the direction of Richfield Public Schools from the 2021 school year through the 2425 school year. And then continuing to expand our social emotional work and really looking at the model that we implemented last year with more social emotional supports in each of our buildings. And also continuing to look at ways to refine and implement our social emotional work in supporting our students in not only academics, but also in, in other ways. Continuing to deepen our staff unity and our one Richfield team, which was some of the theme that we launched this fall with our staff. Measured obviously by our staff survey and some of those questions that go out to our team members. And then increasing presence, place and participation families represented the diversity. And as asked by the board, we went out and talked to our Native American advisory representatives. And then also our Richfield Latino Family Association, moving beyond just PTA's communities and advisories. Really look at participation in support opportunities and attendance at culturally relevant activities and also participation at conferences. Some of the things that were reported back that were highly valued by some of our communities and things that have a much higher participation rate than some others might. And so that was some of the feedback specifically asked to be added by the board. And then also yearly in the spring, we take data from the survey and from our reports and board members conducting that personal evaluation to finalize and finalize my evaluation for the school year. So with that, I will stop and ask a few questions.
So I have, I have a, I brought this up last time about the suspendable incidents and I just want to reiterate it. Number one, the goal I think is appropriate of a 10% reduction across the district. So I think the goal is appropriate and the way you're counting that is appropriate. I just want to make us sure that we disaggregate and report in a way that is meaningful and not misleading. So the demographic representation column, I am assuming that that is individual students. So we're saying that 40.7% of our student body is Latino, for example?
As of 18, yes, last year. Yeah.
Perfect.
18, 19, yeah.
So when we want to compare the suspendable incidents and make sure that we're not over, that we're not over representing any particular subgroup with suspensions. We just need to make sure that we're not multiplying through, you know, what we might be tempted to do is to say that, okay. So Latinos should account for 40.7% of our suspendable incidents. If we're, let's say we're 100% racially balanced. So I want us to not do that, not come to that conclusion. But we need to look at suspended, suspended individuals because one individual may have more than one incident. Otherwise we'd be, it's basically just a units thing, we'd be multiplying through by a numerator and a denominator that are not the same.
So we can look at it and use this especially with a duplicated count, which is all suspensions and then a non-duplicated count, so for each student.
Unduplicated. Yep. I think if we do that, then I think we'll be, we will have
Duplicated and non-duplicated.
Cross the threshold.
Okay.
That will allow us, I think, to be more meaningful and accurate in terms of how we're disaggregating. And looking sort of at that, sort of, basically helping us to determine, are we sort of over disciplining? You know, I mean, again, that's a, that's a not, that would be probably drawing too much of a conclusion. But I think that's why we're looking at this data is that we want to use it to inform our, making sure that our practices are being applied equitably, right?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to share appreciation for some of the follow-up that has happened from our previous conversations to, I think, make this stronger as we have continued to work on it. And then also just sort of acknowledge that I think having the success measured by section for each one of the process goals is really helpful. Because it, it says here at the very front end, this is how we are going to measure it. What it doesn't do is, is actually lay out specifically what success would be on these dimensions. And I think that is where our collective judgment is going to come in as the year goes on. You know, is determining, do we have a level of disaggregated participation that we actually feel good about? That is a different question than how it is going to be measured. And so I think that that is going to continue to be the conversation that we're going to have as we check in on these items over the course of the year. And then ultimately in your final evaluation next summer. So I just wanted to say that out loud. Any other questions or comments and student board members feel free to ask anything that you're curious about as well and it's okay if there isn't anything.
I don't know if this is the right time or maybe when we talk about future things, but something I'm curious about, we are, we're talking about really big changes and improvements. And I like to hear what the plan is to get there. What are we going to do differently so that when we are reviewing these goals in the summer, then we can actually see the success? So that's a homework question.
Good question. Seeing nothing else, but please interrupt me if I'm wrong. We can move on to the one commendation we have this evening, which is some really wonderful student success.
Certainly. Specifically commendation out to Sarah Lindy, School Counsel at the High School from parent Leanna Carter. We've spoken about this in the past, but I just wanted to send over another note to let you know how much I appreciate all you have done for my daughter Dawn and now son Sean. Dawn is doing great at the University of California, Berkeley, and we've recently found out that all of her CIS credits as well as AP credits were accepted by the university. And she is now considered a sophomore. She also received an A on her first college paper. Professor said that only 20% of her class received an A or B. Long story short, Richfield High School is doing an exceptional job preparing students for future success. My sons are also RPS honor students and are thriving. Thank you so much for all you do for students. It is greatly appreciated.
Very nice.
Glad to hear that.
Okay. So the next item is approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. As always, individual item could be pulled for independent consideration if a board member chooses to do so. Otherwise we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tenzing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. So we have three items of old business before us this evening, all of which are additional reads of existing board policies that we have been talking about in recent months. First up is 585 on student surveys.
All right. So student surveys, 585 and 585.1, the guidelines. And I believe we are at the final read, having taken the final board input. Specifically talking about how we conduct surveys, what surveys are in general. Outlining that we will have a process available for people to inspect the survey, give feedback, outlining an approval process. And then also talking about what type of opt-out then if people don't want to participate in the survey that would be allowed to be, that would be set up and structured. And so with that, I represent to you today, 585 and 585.1.
Well, people are doing a final roll and I see Mr. Tenzing about to say something.
Yeah, I think, I think I might have read something, I think I might have read something that actually, I thought I may have thought I saw something which actually isn't in there. So superintendent may choose not to approve any survey.
What section is that?
I'm in section four, student surveys in general, that's for B. Is there any clause, I thought I saw some clause about parent review?
Yes.
But that's not part of survey approval necessarily?
No, parents are not reviewing in terms of approval, but parents are
Okay. Parents are reviewed in terms of ability to opt out.
And also to inspect what's on the survey, yes.
Yep. All right. In that case, in that case, my question is, doesn't matter. I thought I was seeing something that's not there. I'm willing to move the policy as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tenzing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? Just say thanks for all of the hard work to get this one to a final place. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the policy is approved. Next, we have administrative guidelines for board policy 524 on promotion, acceleration and retention.
And just as a reminder, at the bottom, you also have 524 for reference. And so we have the original in here and we have talked about likely a full rewrite, which we have gone through. A couple of board pieces of input. So this was the first read basically of the full rewrite. So as you can see, there's the promotion, retention and acceleration policy. There isn't a specific section yet on promotion that's blended into section one. And then in actual different order, it says promotion, then acceleration, then retention, which is opposite of how it's posted at the top. And so we will continue on to work our way through the total rewrites. To just clarify the guidelines about how do we go about promotion, which it's assumed that students will pass or will move forward from grade to grade. Retention, the process by which a student may end up retained, which is something Um, retention, the process by which, um, a student may end up retained, um, which is something that actually research is very clear is not, um, a typical thing that should occur. Um, and then also acceleration, the processes by which, um, students may be subject to accelerated or possibly grade level accelerated. And so this will take some more work, um, and will continue to get refined in a second review of the full rewrites. Um, but it is open for input if anybody does need.
The only, the only input I have is, just simply definition of terms, so there are a few terms in here that might make sense to an education professional that may not make sense to those of us who are not so trained. Um, twice exceptional students would be an example of, of something that, um, I don't quite know what that means. Um, so we just have to be aware of that, um, if, if there's jargon to, to go ahead and define that.
Typically, we do have a definition section in the policy, I was just looking real quickly, we do not have that in the policy, and so we'll definitely add some definitions into the guideline.
You just said that there's typically definitions in the policy, but this is not the policy?
Uh, it is not in the policy, I apologize, so it is not in the policy, I was looking at the policy five twenty-four below, um, which gives a summary, but not, um, with some of our other policies, which is definitions, so we'll put them into the guidelines.
Or should we revisit the policy and have the definition of the policy, which is where it historically is?
We could do that too.
I, I just think we should be thinking expansively and go back to the policy, we need to go back to the policy.
Then we'll Then we will bring back five twenty-four and five twenty-four-one with, um, some edits to both, um, for our next meeting.
I do think the decision to rewrite was a good one. I, I think what we have here is already significantly stronger than the previous guideline and I appreciate that. And the, the attempts to, I think, make clearer the philosophy and the research behind why retention is not something that we are inclined to do as a district and just all of, you know, promotion, retention, acceleration, so I appreciate the work going into it. Anything else before the superintendent takes us back with his team for more work? Okay, um, last but not least in this section, we have board policy four twelve and the guideline that goes with it on public and private personnel data.
Alright, and so we have redline copy with some significant adjustments, um, to our public and private personnel data. And these are the ways that data involve our staff or adults who are working within the organization. So this is not specific to students, um, but it also now has clarified, um, what each of those pieces are. The, one of the questions the board has was about a public body.
Yep.
Um, the public body can, uh, covers, um, it's a statutory language, applicants for appointment to a public body. And the public body would then be the school board, um, or, um, it applies to all government entities, um, but it would only in this specific, only apply to the school board and then when there's a specific vacancy on the school board. Um, and so it would apply specifically to those who apply and appointed to a vacancy, so all candidates for the open position right now for school board, um, but would not, um, of a, um, in that way, apply to people who are already currently elected and on the school board.
And would not apply to any of our advisory committees, correct?
Correct, um, it would only be from a statutory language, board members or applying applicants for the board. Um, and so applicants for appointment to a public body would be specifically people who have applied to be on the school board, in the late, again, statutory language, and in this case would relies specifically related to people who have applied for board roles.
Yeah, in which, in which case, there's a number of these areas that I don't believe we're systematically maintaining data on. I don't think veteran status, for example, is something that I was ever in, uh, asked about or
So it's not that we are required, it's that if we have the data, that data is considered to be public data.
If we have the data, it's public.
There's not a requirement for us as a district to gather said data, um, but that is what, so if you have applied for the school board, those are things that are considered to be public data.
I see. I see. I see, okay.
And how, yes, and how candidates, applicants choose to deal with that is, is for them. But if we had that in files, that would be considered public data.
Okay, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to make sure I understand the, um, understand the line between the applicant or the candidate's responsibility and the school district's responsibility. Um, so hypothetically, if there is a candidate who, um, does not disclose their veteran status, for example, um, is that, is the school board in some, or the top school board, is the school district in some way liable for that, or is that something that would be, that somehow when this person is filing for candidacy, that this becomes something that they're made aware of? I'm confused.
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have to, and I'm looking at my HR team back there looking at it, so I will have them, that'll be something we will follow up with clarity, um, unless Mr. Holgy provides it faster, but I think he is checking it at the moment.
Or is this, or is this one of those no fault things where it's just assumed that you're bona fide, but it's, but there's sort of no fault if you're, you know, if there's some information, yeah.
We will check it and bring it back. Since this is the second review, we'll anticipate a third review anyways, and so we'll make sure we have that information and if there's something to clarify, we'll absolutely do that.
I mean, it's just that I, the main, the main reason that it comes up is it just feels like a big change in practice relative to
Yep.
Yeah. And I don't know if this is a new thing in the MSBA model policy or not, I see that it, it's essentially taken word for word out of MSBA.
Yes, it is.
So this would be one where if we know what our peers do, that could be helpful.
Like it is, well, it's, yeah, statute thirteen six oh one, which is what I'm guessing, Mr. Holgy, I'm appreciating and enjoying him scrambling for the information as we speak.
Yeah.
I, I was looking for the email that we got from Legal Council because, um, when I read it initially and it was just really briefly, it was specifically applicants for school board, not candidates for school board.
But in the second part, in the second part underneath that, it talks about and additional information is available and public if they are then appointed. Um, so I think, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's funny word wording, isn't it?
So section two says, once they're appointed, the additional items of data are public. So we will, like I said, rather than do this right now, we will look into it and we will get, um, response, information.
There was one other section that I, I saw and I, I sent earlier, so I expect it's already being followed up on, but I realized there was language about finalist means an individual who was selected to be interviewed by the school board for a position in terms of data that is considered public. And I was just thinking about the only person that we as a school board determine is going to be interviewed is if there is a superintendent vacancy. Otherwise, we are not the body making the decision about who finalists are for employment. And so whether or not that language is accurate, um, or if it is actually too specific for what the intent of this policy is supposed to be, so.
So I do believe from MASA, that is to clarify that superintendent interviews, who you all hire directly, cannot be held privately and that they're
So this is specifically about superintendent candidates?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
And then I am also looking at the statute thirteen six oh one, and what it says specifically is data about applicants collected by a body or government entity as a result of the application are private data except for the following, which are public.
Okay, that's helpful.
So if we were to collect it, um, that information would be public.
But it's only if it's part of the application, got it, okay.
Collected as part of an application, yeah. Right. So for example, I am on the Pelsby Board, um, they require um, professional educator licensing and standards board, and I am the superintendent rep for the state, and my resume was required as part of that application and that is posted publicly online, which is all of the information I provided as part of that. Um, and that is then public data.
So, yeah, so it's all about what our application process is for getting on this group.
Where application process is and what is provided. Correct.
Naomi and Adadi can, can attest, it's really, really stiff, right?
And we'll try to Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
But we'll try to work on the language because if we have those questions, there might be a better way or an easier way of, I mean, if public body for us refers to the school board, we could certainly do that, and if school board hiring refers to superintendent and superintendent interviews, we can also go beyond the, beyond the NSBA policy.
Okay, thank you for bringing this back to us, um, in a better conversation, so we'll move into new business, uh, items before us for the first time. Then first up is a request to authorize the district to open bids on the capital facilities project at Richfield Middle School.
Very good, thank you. Um, we are going to have a series of presentations, you have one at the last board meeting, we have one tonight for Richfield Middle School, and then, um, in the future, we'll have one coming forward for Sher- Sheridan Hills Elementary School as well. Invite John Kretschmer from the world, um, to come up and share his information about, uh, the work that's taking place to get to the current plans, um, what those current plans are, and then an action item that follows up, um, requesting authorization to seek bits for that purpose.
Hello, everyone, uh, this is Chris, I'm John Kretschmer, I'm an architectural project designer with the other architects and engineers. Uh, with me is Mike Glass, who saw it, did the presentation for Centennial during the last board meeting. We will be going over a very similar agenda, so I'm going to highlight some of the things that are specific to Richfield Middle School. And if you have any questions about the, um, process that we go through, it's very uniform, it's what we did at the other schools, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that. Here we have the project schedule, we commenced, uh, planning for the project last spring and went through a sequence of phases that has led us to where we currently are, uh, in the heart of construction documents. Those are the drawings and specifications that we issued for general contractors to place their bids for. Um, we will be accepting bids for that, uh, mid-December and then going through, uh, construction phases that'll last from, uh, this coming spring until the August of twenty twenty-one. Um, referendum scope here is very similar to what we're doing district-wide at middle school as well. Um, specific items at Richfield Middle School include, uh, secure main entry improvements, renovated admin suite, which will be next to the, uh, secure main entry, which it currently is not, um, sped suite updates, uh, media center updates, opening center, ring and kitchen and cafeteria renovations. Uh, LTFM, the final item here stands for long-term facilities maintenance, and that's more of a one-for-one replacement or improvement of existing conditions that have outlived their useful life. Items that we're hitting here include mechanical systems, some finishes, uh, like ADA, uh, accessibility updates to multi-user toilet rooms, so that's the boys and girls, not the single user staff toilet rooms, um, and, yeah, some improvements to the pool locker rooms as well. So this is again, something that you probably have seen before, and one thing that I'd like to highlight on this is the fact that we went through, uh, core planning process that included about twelve to fifteen staff members that showed up every single week for six weeks. Followed right on the heels of that were seventeen, uh, user group meetings, and we had two rounds of that. So in total, we had forty meetings, um, with staff at the middle school, which is a huge time commitment for them to give on top of what they're already doing. But it really helped us understand what the complexities are of the building and how we can make improvements that'll give it a more functional space for what they're aiming to do in the future. So this is the existing building program, we can come back to it if you like, but this is the main level. For reference, the arrow at the bottom of the plan was the main entrance, we're not moving that, so the next plan, sorry, we can jump around here. To go to, next slide down will be, uh, the proposed building plan, so the arrow at the bottom again is the main entrance. We are relocating, the yellow bar at the bottom of the building plan is the administrative suite. The pink bar on the left side of the building is sped suite, and then all of the dark red are the exploratories. That was a, uh, huge initiative that the core planning group really wanted to take on and something that we heard early on, even before core planning, with the district administrative staff there, uh, especially Dr. Heinz and Assistant Principal Finkie, that they would really like to have the exploratories as predominantly on the main level as possible, which was a challenge, but I think that we got close to hitting it as much as, uh, the building will allow us to do. On the next two floors, um, it's not as intensive for the renovation scope, but one thing that we were really able to accomplish, again, that was an objective established during core planning, was to have the building reorganized as opposed to grade level, but by department. Um, a really good example of that, that we'll look at a little bit more in detail, was the top bar on the third floor diagram on the right side, um, those are all science labs. Um, the blue bar on the left side at the top is the media center, um, which we'll see a, a rendering of what that looks like now, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us to open up some more circulation space, um, to actually serve towards educational settings for students. So these plans are the conclusion of the core planning. Here you see an example of what we look at at the user groups, it's a more detailed, focused, um, discussion with more specific end users to determine what their needs are for their specific spaces, who they should be adjacent to, and what sightlines might be pertinent. An example of that here is, I'm gonna step towards the screen quick. This is the reception area, there's an existing exterior wall here that we're gonna punch a window in through, so you can see people as they approach the building. Um, so that's a small example of something that can make a really big change in how the building performs for safety and security measure. Here's the science wing that I mentioned earlier, the two smaller rooms on the left and right are actually located on the south end of the building. They were two isolated classrooms that are now being relocated to the north end to be adjacent to the other science labs that are already existing. Here's the media center, it's currently elongated along the exterior wall. Another initiative that was discussed during core planning was to have no inbound classrooms, so ones that were not on the exterior of the building and did not have access to natural light and, uh, views. Uh, so this is an opportunity for us to really be creative on how we can utilize some of the existing structure of the building and elongate it north-south, which would allow more classroom space to exist on the exterior of the building. Here's a flex area, this will be on the third floor, opposite end of the media center. Uh, we were in very core planning that they would really like to have some of these versatile spaces distributed throughout the building. And though this took, uh, uh, extensive effort for us to understand how the right side, some existing larger classrooms that serve general education courses, um, it really brought back some great space that I think students will gravitate to us. Here are the finished standards, it might look like a lot, but there's nothing here that you haven't seen before. Uh, this is referencing some of the existing materials on the right side. It's a, I'll just say it's a challenging color palette to work with, but that's where we get to kinda have some fun with it as well. Um, we've been fortunate in that it's been complimentary to a lot of the district standards that we've established in our previous projects. So here you can see on the main level, the north corridor, um, these are, uh, door right in front of you here is the SRO office, and there's a couple additional offices here. So what is currently, um, strictly circulation space is going to be renovated to create some, uh, extended flexible learning spaces that the window just behind the wall on the left side is looking into what will be the design lab. Um, so this is an opportunity for us to capture some of that space and actually give it to be functional space for the students to have some collaborative learning efforts instead of it being a blocked off wall where maybe you don't know who was behind there or what's going on behind the scenes, so. Um, here's the cafeteria, again, similar scenario, existing block wall separating, uh, corridor from the cafeteria, kind of unusable space. Um, there was a request made by several groups, first and foremost, again, by core planning, to open this up and really created an opportunity for students to have more of a lounge-type setting. They could be used before and after school for students to stay and be comfortable with the building for a supervisable area for a more extended period of time. And this is actually something that they've discussed, uh, having accessible to students during certain hours if they're, um, earning the opportunity to go work individually. Personally, I also like that you can see the mural from here then, too. Um, so this is the current media center, quintessential nineteen nineties, the last time it was updated. Um, it worked well in the day, I'm sure, but it's not very conducive for twenty-first educate, twenty-first, um, learning initiatives. And this is an opportunity, again, like I had mentioned before, for us to really open the space up and give a lot more usable space to the students. Uh, some of the sightlines are, uh, really things that we try to, um, address, just with the fact that there's a lot of heavy structure in the building, but I think that it's played well so far, um, reflects a lot of the settings that we have introduced to the high school, which will be a good precursor for them to further get introduced with these settings as they continue their education. Um, so again, I mentioned it before, uh, for take any questions, just wanna again compliment your staff for making it a very engaging and informative process. We certainly wouldn't have gotten to where we are if we didn't have the continued input from them.
So we're gonna take a pause for any questions before moving on to the next slide, which is the bid authorization, which would allow us to take next steps, um, to move forward and solicit bids to lead construction.
So I kinda just wanted to speak on like the flex spaces at the middle school, because like, I know that at the high school, we've got those too, but we don't really use, well, I don't use them as much, like I have a study hall class and we're not allowed to go out there yet. I don't know if it's because of the construction, cause I know that like later on, we'll get to sit there. But like for the middle school, how is that dynamic gonna work? Cause I know how like, there's a big difference between high schoolers and middle school kids. You can't like just trust like unsupervised students in the area. But I know that like, I don't like the, the new models of the schools are really appealing. But I know that like, I don't like the new models of the schools that really appeal to like students' learning. So like, how is the flex area gonna like?
Great, great questions. Absolutely. Maybe you consider architecture for your career path? The benefit really is driven towards the ability to passively supervise those spaces. So it's not necessitating a staff to occupy the space with the students, but be able to supervise them from afar. That's part of the reason I had mentioned previously, the light, well, not the light, the window, it's what we call bar lights, between the educational space and the flex space. So I understand, I met Arrow my first day in the middle school. So I know that there are staff that walk the building and supervise the space. So that's part of the benefit of it being right off the corridor is that, you know, it's not tucked away in a space where people are not frequent, frequencing.
I had a question about the timing and the phases. I don't know if you want to click back to that, but so phase one talks about the renovation and the upper levels. Phase three talks about the main level. I couldn't see specifically with what's in the slide when the admin suite sped suite work falls within these. What summer is that slated to take place?
It's currently planned for the summer of 2021.
So that is in that phase three main level?
Correct. Yeah. We had really hoped to have that addressed during the first one. And I don't, I'm not saying it can't happen, but there's challenges that come with it. It's moving a lot of expensive square footage of program in particular. It was determined during core planning that they would like to have the admin space be contiguous. So that ate up the square footage where the current fabrication or STEM lab is. So in order to ensure that those spaces could be in close proximity with each other, we had to move the wood shop down a classroom, the design lab to the north end of the building. So that was part of it. And the other fact is the fact where they're being located in their proposed location is where the DCE suite is currently. And we tried to be very conscientious of the fact that we didn't want to provide a temporary home for them, but then, you know, these students need to have more structured environment. So we want to be conscientious of the settings that we're putting those students into.
And I appreciate being really thoughtful about what we can take on in a given summer and ensuring that it's work that we feel confident we can, you know, have done before the end of the year. And so I appreciate the response.
It's always a challenge, but it's part of the fun, too.
So we've learned at the high school how bathrooms are a big deal. So I just wanted, and locker rooms, too. So I just, just because I know I'm gonna get questions. What is our intended scope on the bathroom renovation and the pool locker room renovation? I saw that you sort of said multi-user, you identified the multi-user bathrooms. Are we, does that mean every such bathroom in the building will be renovated? Or does that mean that we're gonna be selective? And then as far as the pool locker room, are we talking about just, you know, a complete overhaul? Just kind of what's the sense of what the expectation could be there?
So when I was, when I mentioned multi-user, I was speaking more specifically to the academic portions of the building. What we're looking at doing currently, are we further dissecting what our opportunities are? And to ensure that we're fitting within the budget, we've identified some scope of work and we're looking to ways that we can potentially build upon it to look at the locker rooms and their existing condition. It's not, we don't have it completely nailed down yet, but that's something that.
So not fully, not fully scoped out quite yet?
Yes, yeah.
One of the things we learned as we were examining is those, the locker rooms and locker room bathrooms were actually fully redone in 2006. And so they are not in the same state as some of the other locker rooms. And so as we look to what we are doing for the long-term facility maintenance in that area, we're still trying to figure out what are the most important pieces for something that is at least 15 years, give or take, newer than any of the other rest.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
So without we ask for your authorization to move forward with this project, issuing a bid. This is a draft proposal. There may still be a few refinances to it prior to publication. But as you can see, the, I just lost the data, just I can't see. Requesting that that be issued with a pre-bid meeting on November 21st and for those to be received on December 10th. With those bids being awarded at the following board meeting.
Is there a motion?
Sure. Okay, I was gonna say, pre-bid.
Is that a motion, Mr. Ashmead?
That's a motion.
Great. Is there a second? I'll second. Thank you. So a motion by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Ms. Malick. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid authorization is granted. We move to the non-resident student tuition rate.
Thank you. And again, this is something that we set annually. We set this amount based on the previous year's audited, with some assumptions for the following year. This year's tuition is set at, or is recommended to be set at $15,188.46 or $89.34 for our kindergarten through sixth grade and for our seventh through twelfth grade to be $18,226 or $106.59. This is something that we do on a routine basis annually to be established. On the other hand, it is very seldom used because this really ties in with the tuition for out-of-state students who are coming from out-of-states and only where the residence is not within the state of Minnesota.
Any questions? Now we can entertain a motion to approve the tuition rate.
I'll move approval of the tuition rate.
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Malick, a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the tuition rate is approved. Next is a request to authorize the district to increase staff in light of higher than anticipated enrollment in two of our buildings, Super Toney and Oski.
Right. So as we have already allocated the FTE from the start of the school year, we are looking to add some additional staff to support some of the student needs in a couple of our classrooms. Kindergarten and first grade at RDLS are a little bit larger. None of them are outside of the range of what is acceptable based on our board targets. However, they are, the areas in elementary that are larger than we would like. And so at RDLS, looking at what the specific needs are and getting input from the classrooms, looking at adding a half-time licensed reading and math interventionist to RDLS to support student academic needs. One of the things to keep in mind at RDLS is there is a full-time, and we pay for this, district-funded amity in each of the kindergarten classrooms. So their kindergarten classrooms actually have two full-time adults within RDLS. And so the staffing there is a little bit different than our other elementary schools. And so that is why we're looking at that academic need specifically there. And then class size average is just around 30 at STEM in fifth grade. And so looking at adding a full-time social-emotional support staff to serve specifically fifth grade, but then also would provide additional supports as available on the third floor at our STEM. And so similar processes, talking to the principal, principal meeting with teachers, and looking at the needs of those specific classrooms and those specific students. And with the, both of those two buildings being higher than projection in terms of their enrollment, adding some staff to support the specific needs of the kids in those areas. So as we ask questions about budgets and what we might do with it, this would be an example of in October, November, things that can be done to look at providing some additional supports where we don't add a full teacher perhaps.
And to connect to our previous conversation, this funding is not coming from fund balance, correct?
Correct.
My math is not working right now. There says three FTE, but we have 0.5 RDLS and one at STEM.
So three FTE are already, were already used. So.
Also, because we already used the three that we have approved.
Correct. So as we approved the budget, that's okay, that's a good reminder. As we approved the budget in the spring, there are three FTE that the board allow that if our enrollment is flat, that I can utilize.
Oh, we're utilized, got it.
So they were utilized and we already added a kindergarten and a first grade teacher at STEM, which also required some more prep specialists. And then we also allocated pieces of staffing to our secondary schools to help support a couple of areas that we knew bubbles were going to be there also.
Came back to me.
I just want to say I'm so glad that RDLS finally getting recognition because I was like, I was the first class to graduate from RDLS. And I feel like we were the most like underrated school. So I was so glad I was getting talked about.
You were, you were new. I feel like there should be some special celebrations this year if you all graduate.
Yeah, that is, that's true.
It's a huge commitment of students and parents to put your kids in a new school like that.
It is, especially since we were like the first class and then in middle school, there was like the dual immersion program.
We learned a lot with you.
Yeah.
Still learning, dude.
Still learning, that's great. If there are no questions, we could have a motion to approve the requested increase in staff.
I will move that we approve the 1.5 FTE additional.
And I will second that.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the motion is approved. So last in the action item, we have one donation from people.
Before I jump to that, I just want to say it's a very good time to remind the process and how we do HR processes. So without the board approval, these positions were already posted because as HR, it would take us an extra two weeks if we waited for board approval. And so these positions have been posted, we have not interviewed. If the board had not approved, obviously we would not be moving forward. And so we are within our rules allowed to do that. But process-wise, some of our staffing, we do some of that work prior to approval, even if, even if we would not be obviously able to hire without that approval. And so it's just a good time to remind us of those processes. And then jump into donations. And so from Kristen Schack, a target employee in the amount of $10 to the Random Acts of Kindness accounts. So thank you to Kristen Schack.
I will move that we approve these donations with gratitude.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the donation is accepted with gratitude. We move into advanced planning and we'll start with a legislative update, beginning with ideas for our potential legislative priorities for 2020.
Right. And so we have foreshadowed this at the last couple of meetings. And so just to walk through this again, every two years, the state of Minnesota does a biennial budget. That was last year. And so the budget for this year and for next year are already set at the state level. And so what that means is the upcoming legislative session is a policy-based session. So there will be some conversation about budget. The main focus of our legislative session should be around policy. And typically that means that it starts a little bit later and it starts often in March rather than in January. And so we have the next couple of months to work out our legislative platform. And in January or February, depending on the availability of legislators, we'll be holding that study session to talk about what are our top priorities? And what are the priorities of Richfield Public Schools as we work with our legislators to try to support some of the needs of our students and our community. And so you have attached the AMSD, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association. They have a wide range of position papers. And so we attach to the board packet the summary of those pieces. And what I'm doing is sort of throwing out sort of that starter probably for people to have a conversation around so that we don't get a conversation around our legislative platform with nothing on paper. And so what I try to do is look at the things that we have prioritized in the past, not create an exhaustive list, but also create a list of some of those things that we've really talked about and that you have talked about at the board. And so, and also some things that are likely to be conversation down at the legislature. So continue to support compensatory funding to ensure staffing and supports for students living in poverty. To have supports during the school day. And it's important for us to note that all future increases are tied to additional time. And so what that means is, as well, compensatory education provides important skills supports and teaching supports to our students. That account functionally is frozen at this point, and any additional dollars would only go to after-school programs. And so they have restricted any of those funds to the future. And so from a policy perspective, obviously not reducing, but also time, not having that tied-down mandate implicated to it. Last year, there was some work in regard to the cross-substitute, in regard to special education. And as a reminder, only about 50% of our special education costs are reimbursed. So maintaining that. And so that last year only kept things steady. And so a policy conversation could be around more funding of special ads without tying specific dollars, but creating some policies around that. Creating and supporting programs to increase teachers of color, something that we have been focused on. Learned in, Mr. Holgi was looking up some of the data for a, we actually have a teacher of color fair coming up at the University of Minnesota. We are actually one of the higher districts percentage-wise for both teachers of color and leaders of color. And so we're pretty excited by some of the work that we have done. And we're looking to the state to continue to support teachers in that area. I'm reducing standardized tests, particularly in grand grade bands where other tests occur. So you'll note in my goals, we're still talking about the MCA. One of the conversations we could have is moving that over to the ACT, but then also talking to the state about removing the MCA at high school perhaps. So some of those areas where those tests might not have the same value. And our students have repeatedly talked about that. I can see them nodding their heads and reimagine Richfield. And again, frequently we hear from our students saying, can we stop? Can we stop the MCAs since we already have to take the ACT? There was some work done to allow local school boards to renew levies. And so future operational levies in the future will allow school boards to renew them. But until then, there continue to be elections and referendums that will continue to go on for renewals. I'm reducing mandates and refraining from future unfunded mandates. So one of the dangers of a policy session is there will be a list of things that school districts will be asked to implement and there will be no funding to go along with that. What that typically means is, is that funding comes from elsewhere within our organization and reductions are used to fill those unfunded mandates. And then asking the state, one of the things that you all have talked about a lot recently, to increase sustainability efforts and then create recommendations for schools to implement, not just on a local level, but then also on a statewide level. And then one of the things also brought for consideration is, you know, in Minnesota, we are having a council-to-student ratio of 350 to 1. And the nation has a 250 to 1 council ratio. And so talking about perhaps increasing supports to prepare counselors and increasing supports to district for counselors. And one of the things our students often talk to us about in the school board presentations, and I see my board members shaking their heads, is needing more support from counselors. And maybe that 350 ratio is a little bit too small. And something that the state could take some action on in terms of supports. So that's, that's some of the things we're starting out with. But obviously, again, this is just sort of a first throw it out there and I expect us to have a couple of conversations in this regard.
So tonight, you are just looking for initial reactions or things that might be missing before we start to narrow down that.
Initial reactions, things to slice off, things to add in. Or just an opportunity to reflect and then come back to it.
I think that one, one thing that we could be thinking about as we think about sort of our own collective voice as a school district and where we want to sort of exercise that, given that if we ask for a few things, but ask for them firmly and with emphasis, then we may get, be more successful than asking for a large laundry list of things. Some of the funding stuff, which is very important, and I don't want to discount the importance of it, like especially across subsidy reduction and allowing school, local school boards to renew levies, we can, I think, be relatively confident that there will be a pretty loud voice from our peers and our, and organizations to which we belong, like AMSD, that would be asking for those particular things. I mean, that's been very consistent from those organizations. And so I guess that, just put that out there for us to think about strategically as we decide, okay, for our own sort of Richfield priorities, do we necessarily have to overlap with things that we're essentially supporting by extension? You know, by our membership in AMSD or MSBA? So anyway, that's why I like, I particularly like the creating programs to recruit, retain teachers of color. I like the sustainability piece. I don't know. And I like taking away the high school MCA.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that's pretty popular with you guys.
Yeah, even just like our students perspective, so like recently, I mean, I'm pretty sure everyone knows at this point, but recently in my political science class, we did like a presentation to the school board and it was basically about like areas. We chose one topic to approve from the school and it was things like graduation rates, school culture, like things like that. And my slides were heavy on like hiring teachers of color. And I like backed that up with the fact that like students of color tend to learn from teachers of color because like we pick up on like the attitudes of it. It's like what we. from teachers of color, cause like we pick up on like the attitudes of it, it's like what we grew up with. And it would just kinda like, I know for me personally, it would motivate me to have teachers of color. Or like, um, the reducing standardized testing is a big one because I do believe that we like, I don't think getting rid of it all as a whole, like, you have to be measured somehow and I think the ACT is like a pretty piece of, I didn't like the ACT. But it was like a decent tool to like measure students like, I guess, smartness. Uh, but the MCA proved nothing because once students learn, like I can say this because like the people in my class talk about it. Once students learn that the ACT was all you needed to get into college, they don't take the MCA seriously. And it's like there was really no point in taking it anyway because no one was gonna take it seriously. And I, I really think that, um, like reducing the standard test is a really good idea and the teachers of color, those are the two that still we need most.
That's really helpful and consistent with what we've heard from student board members before you as well, which is one of the reasons why it continues to be on this list, um.
Especially if the MCA is essentially a lost all meeting.
It would be, it would be really interesting to understand how much the state would save if we're no longer administering high school MCA.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it doesn't.
Yeah, sorry, I did not hear the question.
Oh, I just said especially if the MCA seems to have lost all meeting, if it's no longer useful and people are opting out also.
My problem with the MCA is that as a teacher, it really doesn't give you any information that you can use right now. Those scores are embargoed for at least six months. And, and one may argue, you know, checking for growth and this and that, but we've been doing this for many, many years and I just don't see how that has, ha- to me, it's just a lot of stress in test prep. And I wanna teach social studies and I want to teach science and I can't because now I need to do, uh, literacy, math, uh, test prep. And it's just like, how is that helping students to be?
So we could, we could legitimately ask the question, if, if the MCA exists, uh, it's, MCA exists as an accountability mechanism, right? Um, so we could legitimately ask the question, has it actually succeeded in driving better outcomes for students? I'm not sure if that's.
I think it's like, I think that MCA scores, cause I know teachers check for like improvement. I think they've improved, but I don't necessarily think it's because of the like constant tests that we have to take. I think the test scores improve because like we get older and we learn more and we take like more advanced courses. So I don't think it's necessarily like a learning process or like a test prep. It might just be like, oh, last year I learned about this, but now I know this. Like you just advance as a student as a whole, which causes you to get like a higher test score, so.
Just one quick shout out to Dr. Daniels and the high school, just because, um, I completely agree, um, about the MCA not being something that is highly valuable to us as a high school. It is important to note that not only has the ACT gone up in each of the last three years and graduation rates have gone up in each of the last three years, but if you look at MCA reading rates, um, it has gone up also in each of the last three years. Um, and so, um, fifty-two and a half percent of our high school students taking the MCA reading last year passed. Um, and so, well, we are not focusing specifically on the MCA and I would agree with, um, Mr. Tensing and I would agree with Dayani that we should have that conversation about removing that test. Um, our students are improving and doing quite well at that test and continue to do well. So it's just something to be proud of amongst our many data points that are going well at the high school.
Um, the one other thing I was gonna add was to see in the way both of you lit up as we talked about, um, doing more to recruit teachers of color to the district. Um, I, I think in many ways you all would probably be some of the most effective recruiters that we have by being able to share why it matters so much to you and I think, um, for others of us to be able to talk about why it's important to our school at large and actually why it's also really important for white students to have teachers of color at the front of their classrooms as well. And so there are a number of times during the year, Superintendent Unoski just talked about a job fair maybe coming up. And so I would love to think about if there, there are things in that that would be interesting and exciting for you to be a part of. It would be awesome to have you with us in some of those moments.
Yeah, the teachers of color thing is just like a really, like an extreme, like it has so much benefit that people kinda like overlook, that they don't really see. Like in my presentation, I was talking about like, um, how HBCUs are never talked about, like historically black college universities. And there were some like students in my class that were like, oh, really? I didn't know what that was. And like not even only for people of color, I think it's a good thing what you said, like for even white students to hear. And I do wanna also say a shout out to, to Dr. Daniels too because like it's, it's in the numbers, like numbers don't lie. Like graduation rates have gone up since she's been there, the MCA rates have gone up, like you said, like it's just all things. And even like that tends into like forming supportive relationships with teachers, like feeling like you have a bond with your teacher or like you can go and talk to them, like I, like, I mean, well, Ms. Daniels has been there since I've been a freshman. But, um, last year, like I went to her office and like I could talk to her, like I feel like I could be very transparent with her, cause like, like I relate to her, like she relates to me, she, she's like, if I talk to a white teacher, I feel like, I feel like white teachers don't like to be offensive, so they will never say like, oh, this black student or anything like that, cause they think that it kinda like, is like racially like discriminating. But really, it's like, I feel like those conversations are like healthy to have. Or you, you even like take a look at all the staff, like Warren and Brandon, the security guards at Richfield, they're black. And like you could just see like the energy at the school, like all the black athletes, like all the students always loved the security guard and they talked to them and like, that's why Warren was promoted to the, um, yeah, that.
Social emotional.
And like students talk to him because they feel like they can go to him, like those friends are real.
They can have to.
So like, I think her main point was like, it's nice to have someone that looks like you holding your cap.
That, very well said, ma'am.
Sort of follow up because I can't help myself. So we are participating in a teacher of color recruitment event on Friday at the University of Minnesota. Um, Mr. Flukas who is shaking his head will be there, Mr. Holgy who is smiling at us will also be there. Um, there is dinner also there, it is from five to seven. And so I will follow up with you after me, but I consider this an invite to be on our team if you would like to help us recruit either of you. Um, that would be a great addition to our team. Oh, and, um, I'll recall, our director from the school board will also be there, um, helping us recruit. And there are actually five members of our team who enough to have that conversation. We started this a couple of years ago when we had approximately four percent teachers of color. Um, and we have more than doubled our, our teachers of color since then. And are, are doing quite well in terms of improvement and, and support of a, a more diverse teaching force.
For everyone um, who's very passionate about this, as I am, uh, there is a forum October twenty ninth, uh, hosted by the, um, the group to increase teacher, teachers of color and American Indian teachers in Minnesota. Uh, there's going to be a discussion about reintroduction of a bill that was introduced last year, but was not included for budget purposes. So, uh, and this is going to be from four thirty through six thirty at the Minnesota Humanities Center. And I think it's going to be very informative.
Ms. Cole has been very active in the stage raising her voice to help diversify and strengthen the teaching force.
Well, good initial conversation, thank you for your contributions on this. Um, so assuming it's okay, let's move into information and or questions members of the board would like to share with each other. And I know we also are gonna have some time in this section for our student board members to talk about a conference that they, I, just today, attended, is that right?
Just today?
Just today, so you just speak up whenever you're ready. Um, so any updates or questions that people have for one another?
Um, I can start, so I, I know I attended the student social studies presentations and I played Crystal, did anyone else? And Paula was able to attend.
Sorry, Mr. Paulus.
And Mr., oh, that's awesome, so that was a pretty strong round. So I've been going since my son was a senior and presented and, um, one thing I would say, it's a really eye-opening experience to hear directly from the students and their level of enthusiasm is pretty impressive. So it's such a great opportunity for us to be able to be there. I know we also had some community members and city council people that were there. And so there was a little conference, con- conversation about, um, having the option for some students to maybe have recommendations for the city of Richfield presentations and not just the school. To inform our, our, um, city council people and our entire community about kind of ideas that you guys all have. Also, um, one thing that I saw, I've seen over the years is sometimes when something comes up more than once, it's a little concerning. It makes you think we really need to work harder at this. So one thing that I heard a few times was, um, things about counseling and whether or not we're really meeting the needs of all the students for college counseling or after-high school counseling. Um, and with adding things on pathways, I think it's really something for us all to think about, um, how we can help address that. And that's kinda what you talked about, you briefly mentioned about the ratios of counselors. I really think it's something we should definitely look at because we're hearing from our students that we could do better at that. And then also we all received the Minnesota Student Survey, the one that we get every three years for, which covers a whole bunch of things, but student mental health is one that is covered. And I know there was a significant increase in students diagnosed with anxiety and depression and other mental health, um, diagnoses. Um, and I know we heard about this in our reimagine Richfield work, but I also think that's another area. So that would be like student social workers or other social emotional supports that we could add at younger ages. But across the board, really looking at how we can help meet the needs of those students when they're in our buildings, but also looking at preventive things that we could do when our students are in younger grades. So different types of social emotional support and learning how to deal with difficult situations and making, really, I think, building it into our curriculum.
So to sort of dovetail on, um, with what Christine is talking about, um, in, in reflection to, uh, Mr. Royster's comments, um, obviously, um, you know, he had brought forward a concern about our, sort of systemically, how well are we, um, meeting the needs of our students with five oh four plans? Um, which I feel like that actually ties in very well in terms of what we're doing, um, from a guidance counseling perspective. And basically, you know, I know that one of our, one of our great ambitions, and this has been true ever since I've been on the board, is to meet the needs of all students, right? And so including those students with five oh four plans in that category of all students, they're a subset of all students. So the question that I would ask the administration to ponder is, I know we have a presentation coming up from the high school. Um, we've asked for, um, some discussion about our scheduling, uh, middle school and high school scheduling process, um, with an aim towards understanding how effectively are we building schedules to meet the needs of our students? And I don't know if, this might be asking too much for that particular presentation to sort of also tie in, um, identifying the, uh, you know, the five oh four, you know, how effective we're meeting the needs of those students with five oh four plans. I don't know how you measure that, I don't know how we kind of determine that systemically. But I guess I would just put it out there for, um, administration to think about, um, how we can start to, um, monitor. Uh, cause that, that would be one of our jobs as a board, is that oversight job of kind of monitoring performance and, um, how we can wrap our hands around it. You know, we've had an anecdotal report, um, but I think we need to then understand if, if that means something else, so.
No, I think that that pairs well, so Dr. Clarkson, um, presents either every year or every other year in regard to our special ed counts and our special ed unduplicated duplicated child counts, um, and talks about some of the processes related to special education. Um, she also does some coordination, um, of five oh four work and five oh four plans, so that's within her team. And so we could certainly look at pairing, pairing up a report, um, in regard to five oh four, five oh four services and students and student counts and, and an overall description of what we're doing and.
Yeah, I, I think the data that we've received thus far, or the reports that we received, tend to tell us just in a descriptive sense about what our population of kids is. Basically, what are the numbers of students that we're identifying in these various categories? What I guess I don't feel like I necessarily have a grasp on is, um, any way of measuring how well are we serving those, those particular students. Um, again, I don't know how you do that, I mean, we look at it perhaps at a very high level in terms of we do look at our special ed students as a subgroup with, whether it be MCAs or some other achievement measures. Um, but I don't know if that, I don't know what the overlap is between those two sets and, um, if that's really a comparable thing. So anyway, I mean, and, um, and I don't know if we call that out specifically in any of our surveys or not.
I don't think we asked a specific survey question related to five oh four plans.
Or special ed in general, or.
We can certainly think about how would we, how would we report that back and we can, we could.
Yeah, I mean, I, I recognize that it's not a simple question. So that's why I'm just sort of saying, but it is a worthwhile one to think about.
And I would just quick add, you said students with a five oh four, there's like this big gap between the students with a five oh four and all these students and parents that don't know that a five oh four exists or what it is. And your kid can be, you know, just diagnosed with a, uh, anxiety or depression. And unless your physician or the person who made the diagnosis coaches you to get a five oh four, it's not, not everybody knows what it is. And I, I'll be honest, my daughter was diagnosed with a mental health issue and I didn't know what a five oh four was. If the doctor hadn't sat me down and said, you can get these accommodations, these things might help her in school. I wouldn't have ever known or thought to ask. And she probably could have qualified for it earlier than kind of when we got everything in place. But I think, I don't know how to do that, but I think it's an important thing to educate parents about what kind of options are out there. And if your child has a mental health diagnosis, this is something that you should look into.
Right, right.
As we think about concepts like radical hospitality, how do we, how do we educate parents in a way that the expectation isn't full? We have it online and we have it in a handbook, um, there has to be, we have to figure out better ways.
Right, and, and then perhaps, and again, probably as part of the radical hospitality aspiration, as well as our longstanding aspiration to, um, serve all students, um, an ideal, an ideal world wouldn't require a five oh four to meet the needs of, of, of that student. Um, an ideal world would be assessing that student's needs and meeting them proactively, whether there was a
Diagnosis.
Diagnosis or not, that's right, so, um, yeah.
Which I think both of you have touched on, one of the overarching things that I wanted to raise. And again, in response to the, the public comment that we had from Mr. Royster earlier, is just thinking about what would it look like to sort of reexamine how we approach counseling?
Right.
And what that relationship looks like, what that caseload looks like. I think there's all sorts of questions and I would be excited and very motivated to hear from our team about what opportunities exist for us because it is something that we are hearing consistently about. I was hearing about it in the presentations I was at last week as well.
I think as we think about, there's two sort of concepts, and so now I wanna sort of separate those out briefly, which is the five oh four components is one piece and the counseling overhaul restructure. And while I push the five oh four conversation process towards Dr. Clarkson, I think the high school absolutely, um, as part of their presentation, should be integrating and should be able to integrate transformation of a college plan, um, and a counseling plan, I'm sorry, not college.
Right, cause college isn't appropriate for.
I was just thinking of the things that, that our students have told us in, in regard to counseling, a wide range of those included college preparation.
Yeah, and in terms of, of your investment of energy, I'm, I'm less worried about us going into the weeds on the five oh four thing. And because I think if we can say we're meeting the needs of all students, then that means we're, you know, we're hitting that five oh four piece too. So, yeah.
And this goes to, uh, teachers' professional development because it doesn't even need to be a mental health issue, like we as teachers, uh, getting that on the mindset that it is okay for kids to walk around, for stand, you know, to, to work while they're standing, to, to take breaks and, you know, that, that the years of being in rows are over. Uh, and, and, and we as teachers have that. I don't feel comfortable telling a parent about your child needs an IP, but I am very comfortable with saying, let's write this up so that these accommodations that I'm already doing can follow the student when they're in another classroom. And, and, and I think that will help with the, uh, reaching out to families piece that instead of pushing so much for, you know, special education, sometimes it's just these little tweaks that make such a difference in, in, in the student's day.
I agree, and I feel like at least to begin like a process like that, we should, like, it's such a complicated process to just like make a solution for. So I feel like we should begin with at least. So, I feel like we should begin with at least acknowledging like what's wrong, since there's not, since it's not easy to come up with what's right, we should come up with what's wrong. And I really feel like it's wrong that people have to share personal stories about their kids for change to be made. Like, I feel like that's not what it should take. I feel like it should just be like common sense for injustice to be wrong. And that's not even just speaking like racially, that's just like mental health, like 504 plans, like it shouldn't have to take for like parents to like have years of like segregation with their kids. I think that's like a fault in the process.
Thank you. Goes back to what you shared with us last night. I'm very passionate about injustice and addressing it and we appreciate you for bringing that here. And, and now with that, this feels like a good transition to hear what you two would like to share about your time today.
Actually, it's just, you know, I mean, because.
Oh, you were not there, Naomi? Okay, got it, sorry.
Yeah, so basically, it was like, it was a, um, a leadership conference and it was called, well, I don't know if this one's called Reimagine Minnesota. I know that the last one that I went to, like last month, there was like five of us who went to a Reimagine Minnesota leadership conference and it was basically just talking about like, how can we, because there was, there was like groups from Michael Richfield and like Burnsville, like basically schools all over Minnesota. And it was basically talking about like the student perspective on like what's wrong with schools and how we can fix it. And so, what we did was we wrote ideas on paper of like how to fix schools. So, what they did was this time we went to the convention center, an even bigger space that was sitting. And it was like way, a way bigger event, and what they did was they took our ideas that we wrote on that paper and they made like conference rooms and there would be hosts and I was one of the hosts that would go into, that we were assigned to like the room. So, the room that I was in was like, I forgot what the exact name, it was like Leaders Teachers something and it was basically saying like, how can, how can we fix what's wrong with our school? But the teacher side of it, like how can teachers approve? And kind of like the main ideas that my group shared was basically saying like, teachers having better relationships and caring more for students, which is like what I was talking about earlier. What else did we talk about? Oh, the hiring teachers of color was a really big one and also like student engagement, but like on the teacher aspect of it, so kind of like teacher engagement, if that makes sense. And then there was also rooms like school culture, college readiness, career, career, college and career readiness, like things like that, it was like many conference rooms. And I don't know if it was the mayor now or the mayor before, I kind of confused. Oh, both. They were like, the mayor, mayors were there. And like important people and they were basically like really emphasizing how important it is for student voices to be heard and how they really like, they're advocates for that and I really appreciate it. It was a good event for students to be heard.
Thank you for the very good summary.
Just super quick, so she was part of a group that helped plan because of our role and what we did as locally as Reimagine Richfield. So, a team did that a few weeks ago and then the big event was today for about fourteen hundred students metro lab.
Thank you for representing us.
The one other thing I was going to share was just to celebrate Paula Cole, who was elected to the Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly as one of the representatives from our local district of school districts.
Yeah, eleven, yep.
So, yeah, congratulations and that's exciting to have you representative share. So, moving on to future meetings.
Oh, I have one more thing, sorry.
Of course, that's fine.
Um, we also had our district technology advisory committee meeting this past week and Corey Flinger, Director of Technology, presented and talked, had, we kind of had a discussion with all of the community members and parents that were there about how the start of the school year went for them. And then he kind of reviewed some of the referendum spending where things sit. He'll be presenting at a future board meeting. But he also talked about kind of how we are paying off some of the last part that includes interest and they were going to get some stuff up on the website to update people on the technology levy and also put, we talked about putting something out in our schools to get kind of information on where that's sitting and where the money is going and the whole process is going. It was a good and interesting meeting, but he will be presenting to all of us sometime.
Now, I'm going to move to future meetings and again, want to be clear because our next meeting is at an atypical time for us, which is seven PM on Tuesday, November twelfth. And that meeting will include canvassing the results of the November fifth school board election. It will likely also include a couple of additional business items, so just be on the lookout for that agenda item in advance of that meeting on the twelfth. The next regular meeting at the regularly scheduled time is seven PM on Monday, November eighteenth with public comment. Any items people would like to request for future meetings that have not, already been raised tonight? All right, we can now entertain a motion to move into closed session. Thanks for everybody for being here tonight, by the way. As allowed by Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh-three for purposes of labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion? So, we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye and after a brief recess to clear the room, the board will reconvene in closed session. Good night, everybody.